Old Business, also. Okay, Old Business, letter A, Camp Hope Code Enforcement Extension Denial. And we will have Alan or Dave discuss this as well.
All right, I will have Alan come up because I'm sure there will be some specific questions. But so that, as was mentioned, back in November, um, twenty twenty four, the city council discussed Camp Hope at their council meeting and the tent structures at her, at thirty nine West Carlton Road. The property doesn't meet zoning and building codes, and also there was health and safety concerns at the time that were expressed. Code, uh, after a discussion of council publicly, um, council kind of directed staff to give her to the spring to remove the tents. Code enforcement, Mr. Beaker issued a notice to Missy, given her to April thirtieth, to come in compliance with the, um, with the notice violations, which is remove the tents. On March twenty fifth of this year, um, Missy requested additional time beyond April thirtieth to remove the tents. Code enforcement denied her request, um, at that time, and as of today, the structures are still in place. And on May first, the day after the deadline, um, Missy was issued a notice of municipal civil infraction for the violation. And then after two weeks, um, from the notice issuance, if the violation isn't corrected, it becomes a district court ticket, and then the matter goes ultimately in front of the judge or court. Adam, any, or Alan, anything you want to add to that?
No, I mean, I, you know, that's, that's how our ordinance works, and that's the process to enforce it. So, you know, we were, our office was just following, just following the, uh, the process.
Okay, so I believe council can take no action, and this will remain an administrative matter under, um, the city staff's direction, or we could, um, give some renewed guidance. Thoughts from council? Yes, Councilman Sutcliffe.
I know this is a hot issue, but the issue is, we have help for people. There's a place for them to be, get aid, help versus along the path, long, all over the city. I mean, nobody wants homeless. We don't want to have the issue, but we do have it. So I'm just questioning if we should really look at maybe extending this until there's long-term help, which we don't know what that is, but Missy has centralized the homeless issue, which I think is benefiting the entire city.
Thank you, Councilman Sutcliffe. Councilman Flynn.
I have talked to a number of business owners throughout the downtown area, and, um, they basically say what Mr. Sutcliffe has said is that, right and wrong, Missy's been able to take the homeless and have them in a centralized area, and that has kept the homeless, not taking one side or the other, but from frequenting areas of the downtown that had become disruptions. And one business owner told me that he found some trying to break into their building one evening, and, uh, he said, we don't have that problem now because Missy is taking care of that with Camp Hope, so. Some of the downtown business owners are behind her effort, right and wrong. But, uh, you know, if there's a way we can figure out how to make it work for everybody, a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Wolfram.
Uh, you'll recall that, uh, we had people camping, um, along the bike path and other places, and so we made, uh, I, I made it a civil infraction, uh, to camp on city property, and Missy has found a place that they could camp. And, um, so I think that was, that, I think that's valuable, that otherwise, if, if she has to eliminate the tent and move everybody off of there, they're probably going to end up back where they were when we had the, the first problem.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Councilman Solon. No, no, go ahead.
Thank you. So while I appreciate what Missy's done, um, two years is a long time, and it would have been helpful if, um, a more permanent solution could have been found. We already have on our trail again encampments that have had to been broken up by the police in the last, uh, two or three weeks, um, some pretty substantial. We even had, was it a thousand pounds of garbage or more?
That's, I was gonna ask Jason to come up and, yeah. Just at, just at one site, I believe, uh, north of Fia and east of the St. Joseph's.
Yeah, so as of, as of Friday, any day, we've had seventy man hours, had roughly four thousand pounds of trash that was picked up over the five days that were out there. We're still not completed. There's one more camera waiting with the lease to clear this week.
Um, how does that compare so far to last week's, or excuse me, last year's cleanup numbers?
Just probably double. It's more, probably. This isn't much trash in my time that I've seen on there since I've been here. I think the last time the difference is it was isolated, and this has been completely from West Tree Hollowway heading north.
Yeah, when I walked in from the cemetery all the way to the lake, there were, uh, the same spots, basically. I guess I didn't notice more. It just looked like the same stuff sort of reemerged, just more volume.
More volume.
Are there more sites?
Yeah, now, not too many more than the usual, but the amount of trash is definitely more than we've seen recently.
And we don't, do we have anyone speaking from the law enforcement side here? Um, I'm curious if we've, I know there was one person actually arrested, but I don't think it was for the camping ordinance. It was for a bench warrant out of Branch County. Do we know how many people, if anyone, has been cited under the ordinance?
We could not, oh, that tonight.
Okay. Um, yeah, don't have a chief here. Yeah, the ma- the main concern for me, uh, one of the main concerns for me was when, I think you were there when we talked to fire, uh, the fire department, and they were concerned about the structures, uh, the health and safety for the residents in the structure. Uh, I think that was the main reason we started these actions.
Are you talking about the property?
Uh, yes, well, both, actually, yes, but because they had for like, uh, not propane, maybe propane heaters out on the trail, is that correct? Some sort of heating structure. But also in, in Camp Hope, the fire department's assessment to the Public Safety Committee in twenty twenty four was that there was a possible risk due to the impermanence of the structure. Okay, any other comments from council? Yes?
Thanks, Mayor Proton. I have a question actually for the city attorney as it relates to our ordinances and, uh, whatnot in regards to these structures. If we choose to basically ignore what we have on the books, does that put the city in any type of legal liability if there was to be a fire and someone were to perish in one of those structures? Could you?
No. You give governmental immunity.
Even, even we, as council just chooses not to enforce a certain ordinance?
Right, there's no obligation that you have to enforce an ordinance. No one can generally compel you except for very limited circumstances. And that would be a court order by grand, and you would mandate this to somebody to enforce something. So, yeah, they, the, you would only have liability for things that constitute some sort of court. And then it's only for limited, um, circumstances that are, um, exceptions to governmental immunity under Governmental Port immunity. So, um, yeah, there's, there's no risk to the city. There might be a risk to the health of, you know, people that are in there or neighboring structures, but that's not, uh, something that lies with the city that likely whoever provided for the structure or having used in the neighborhood or potential accident would cause harm.
Is there any way to cure the, the infraction? By filing a permit following building codes, is it prohibitively expensive?
Yes. Alan, could you come up?
So if you were to follow the ordinance, transitional housing is permitted within the ordinance. However, you have to, it, it would require, it would require architectural and engineering drawings that are reviewed and approved by a planning commission, and then the structure would have to be built according to the, uh, the Michigan State Construction Code, and it would have to pass, it would have to pass, um, uh, state requirements for a structure. So, yes, it's possible to do it according to all of the rules and regulations, but yes, it's exceedingly expensive.
Okay, so there, there's no way within the current ordinance to have this type of structure here?
No, which is why, which is why she's in, you know, in violation of the ordinance.
Right, okay. Yes, Councilman Solon.
Well, so additionally, the, um, I've had residents from the apartment complex just above the thrift store who have complained about the language and the fires and other things over the last two years, um, that happens, that comes up from the parking lot. While I'm glad that Rebecca's life was saved, I admire that and applaud it. You know, we, we keep making exceptions. We get lambasted for making exceptions, um, to extend businesses, um, you know, grants and, you know, fulfilling their requirements and their obligations. And then here we are trying to enforce an ordinance, and we're getting lambasted for enforcing the ordinance. And then I, for one, take great offense to people choosing to litter and deface our property. I, I take great offense at finding used needles on public property. We've, I've, they've been found in the downtown district. They've been found on the bike trail between the cemetery and Bobby's. There's human refuse found i- in open areas that children ride their bicycle by. And I'm just supposed to say, hey, you know what? These guys fell in hard times, give them a break. Well, I, I'm sorry for the hard times. There are opportunities. Yeah, maybe they're hard to find, but you know what? Life takes hard work sometimes. Life takes sacrifice. Uh, uh, um, we've all worked hard to attain our lifestyles, and, and that's what's required. And tents are not an acceptable living condition within the city of Hillsdale, period. They're not, not on, not on the trails and not on, but not on private property. It's not an acceptable dwelling within the city of Hillsdale. I, and I, for one, would not, um, be for an ordinance changing that. We need permanent structures for people to dwell in, not something that can burn down. And there's conflicting reports between the efficacy of this structure or its, its, its sanitary conditions. Uh, the fire department, who I trust implicitly, um, have told me things that conflict with what Mrs. Desjardins said about her facility, and I, I can't, uh, believe that my fire department would, uh, lie to me about what their conditions are, what the conditions that they observed are. And so I would encourage our city to just say, you know, um, homelessness is not an acceptable lifestyle. Find the source, um, I'd encourage our churches to philanthropically do something, but we as a city need to maintain the city's integrity. And that does not include allowing people just to, um, make a home anywhere they please. It's unfair to the taxpayer. It's unfair to the family with ten children who can't let their children ride their bicycles free. It's unfair to me or my wife, who might want to walk down to the, the lake in Bobby's when it's twilight or dark, and we're always looking in the shadows, wondering if somebody's lurking there. It's unfair to the property owners who people don't ask for permission and choose to camp there because they're, they're absentee property owners. And then the city cops don't have enforcement rights until they get the property owner's permission. That's unfair. And while I appreciate the efforts that have been made, they, you know, two years is enough. And, and, um, different, um, options, different solutions have to be found.
So can I speak because I can't win the solution?
Uh, I, I'm fine with that, but let's, uh, go around the horn here one more time. Councilman Sutcliffe.
You know, we really do have catch twenty-two, and disbanding post-Hope is only going to create larger problems throughout the city, which you're concerned about. I think the issue is, we need to have a place for the homeless. If it is a tent, it's a tent, but it's an isolated place. It's a controlled place. It's a controlled environment, the best we can do. To put this all the way through the streets and up and down the city is not the answer. But part of that answer is, law enforcement needs to enforce anything outside of Camp Hope. I mean, if we have people on the trails at city property, that needs to be enforced strictly, hard, because we want to put people, I mean, we don't want to put anybody for, in, in Camp Hope, but we do offer an opportunity, and Missy has a lot of programs, and it's a step out of homeless. To take it away, you're just going to exacerbate the problem throughout the entire city. But we need to lean on our police officers to enforce our ordinance. But at the same time, we're going to overlook an ordinance. That's a catch twenty-two, I get it.
Thank you, Councilman Sutcliffe. Councilman Wolfram.
Uh, yes, I was unaware. I'm glad that Jason informed me about the extra trash. I was, I was unaware of that, so I'm, I'm happy that it came to light.
Yes, this team is doing a, a good job out there. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, uh, the only other piece of this that I can think of is the Share the Warmth expansion. Hopefully by next year, I doubt they're going to get it done this summer. Maybe we should have asked, uh, Mrs. Myers to come in for an update. They're going to have a, hopefully, a permanent operating base all year round. I believe twenty-four seven on top of it, but at least at night all year round. So that could help alleviate some of these issues. But we, I, I haven't heard a clear timeframe about, um, when that will come about. Okay, anything else? Yes, Councilman Wolfram.
This isn't to start a problem, right? Malibu has, Malibu Beach is.
It's all over on me.
So, in Tennessee.
And I don't know why you'd want to be here rather than Malibu. Councilman Sutcliffe, do you have something else?
Yeah, I wonder if I can make a motion to, I guess, avoid this ordinance, to allow Camp Hope to exist, but at the same time, ask our police department to enforce outside of Camp Hope.
Yes, I think all we would need is the specifics of the, um, enforcement action, right? What, what exactly you're proposing, but unless there are objections from council members, I would invite, uh, Missy to speak. Any objections?
Appreciate the offer, but why couldn't she have spoken during regular public comment?
That's true, yeah, we can limit it to three minutes.
That's fine, I appreciate that, but that's what public comment is for.
Yes, yes, thank you, Councilman Solon.
Mr. Mackey? Hi, Melissa Desjardins, Executive Director. Hi, Melissa Desjardins, Executive Director of Hillsdale Community Thrift. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton, City Manager, Councilman. Did I not request this to be on the agenda? Did I not message you to ask to speak tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I thought an old business that I didn't know was on a timeline.
That's, that's up to the hotel.
So, now that I see where everybody stands, I wish I was able to speak first because I was actually coming with a solution. But now I'm seriously thinking about it, this city actually deserves it. I asked to speak with you today for updates on our future plans. When we opened in two thousand eighteen, we had no plans of housing the homeless, and two thousand twenty-three changed that with the city ordinance banning camping on public property. We formed a Hillsdale Impact Team to change the original ordinance and also help provide guidance with the transitional housing. We now have waited for a full-time shelter or a full-time warming center. It didn't happen. We were planning on taking everyone to the warming center because we were led to believe that they were going to stay open through the summer. That is what we were told. So I had every intention of taking down my tent and moving everybody there. April twenty-fourth, they closed. So what was I left with to do? So, the plan is, our transitional, our transitional facility happens now. So with that being said, we have located a building downtown that we will move our thrift store to, and we have a lease agreement and the down payment already secured. All I have to do is put a signature to it. Our current main location, also known as the Old Big Boy Building, will become the transitional facility. It will offer a structured program using our local agencies and nonprofits for supportive services. Employment assistance, housing placement, case management with an outs, with an onsite social worker, full-time, life skills development, mental health support, sober meetings, financial classes, and so much more. The ultimate goal will be to help the individuals regain stability and independence during their most critical phase of their lives. This program isn't just for the homeless, but also for the, for the post-incarceration, uh, after addiction recovery program, and anyone that needs help with securing self-sufficient, self-sustainable, and safe housing. I was asked a little over a year ago if I could continue this work so that our city could be used as an example of how to solve the homeless crisis, and I haven't stopped. Does anyone have any questions for me? Because the only other thing is, can I really have more than three minutes, please? Because I'm not asking for.
That's fine, we give her time for questions, no?
Thank you. I, I also have one more thing to add. My ask is this, grant me an extension to execute this plan. I can execute this plan in less than four months. But again, this would have been done already had I known that there was not going to be a full-time entity. Otherwise, I'd have had this done already. I want you to understand that. I don't want to stand up here and break any rules or any laws. But I do know when, when it comes time to it, sometimes just crap happens, and it didn't work out. So we have to execute another plan. So with that being said, all we want to do is serve our community. A transitional shelter has a seventy-three to eighty-six percent success rate in housing people in sustainable housing and keep that housing for longer than a year. Our transitional facility, running out of a tent, is at seventy-four percent. That's how many people, that's the percentage of how many people got into sustainable housing. Uh, we would like, and we would use an outcome measurement guide. We'll be able to, uh, report, we constantly call people who have already been housed. We ask them how they're doing. They can still use us as a resource. We will offer times for the public to be able to use our services at a future date. We will also be providing meals for the public, and those dates, uh, will be released at a future time as well. I'll now take your questions.
Any questions, Councilman Solon?
Thank you, Missy. Why didn't you include that language in the packet for us to read before? I, I wasn't aware that you wanted to speak. I, I was, I saw that there was an extension to it. There's nothing in the packet that told me that you had a plan.
So.
Nothing communicated to me personally.
Absolutely. So I can answer that. This got put together as an emergency on April twenty-fourth is when I started to execute all of this. It is now what, May fifth? So I had less than ten days, basically, or nine days, I can't do math right now, I'm too nervous, to get this all in action. While I had it all in my back pocket, I wasn't about to announce it until I absolutely positively knew that I had the support coming from the city. I mean, because I have to, I have to work now with rezoning that building. I'm going to have to work with that. I know that that is not an easy task, so I have to work with the zoning commission. So the thing about it is, is that I'm sorry that you weren't prepared, but neither was I. I was told that the warming center was going to stay open through the summer, so you can imagine my panic when I heard that they were closed on the twenty-fourth. And what am I going to do with two young individuals that can barely remember to bat themselves, let alone another woman who's a brittle diabetic, that at any moment she can drop to forty, and if she doesn't get her glucose pills right away, she'll die. So it's really hard to sleep at night knowing, and I know I wouldn't sleep at night knowing if they were going to be back on those trails. So forgive me for not being able to prepare in enough time. I wasn't prepared myself either.
Councilman Flynn.
I'm assuming you spoke with Mrs. Myers about that, her closing on the twenty-fourth?
Um, from what I, my, one of my staff members reached out to one of their board members.
Okay.
So if it was a, if it was a miscommunication, then it was a miscommunication, but.
Oh, I just don't want to, I mean, you can see where I'm coming from. It's like, this is a you and her issue.
No, no, it's not an issue at all. See, the difference between a warming center and a transitional facility is I have an actual program. I can mandate drug testing. I can mandate who can use the transitional program and who can't. When you run a shelter and it takes any kind of state funding, anybody can come in the door as known. If they're being disgruntled, of course, they can be kicked off the property. But, you know, my plan is how it's always been from two years ago, that you will not do drugs. And if you want sustainable housing, then you must follow my program.
I did, I just meant, I understand.
Oh, sorry.
I just meant from the standpoint of, you know, you were led to believe by the warming center that they would be open all summer, and then they close. So I just, you know, I just don't want people to think that that was a city thing.
No, gosh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, it wasn't a city thing.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Bentley.
Uh, where's the building downtown?
The Old Mary Beth's building. Next to Gold Star.
Councilman Solon.
That's going to be the thrift store location?
That'll be only the thrift store.
The, your current location is what you would like to?
Yes.
You're going to have to do a lot of work inside that building.
Well, we pretty much have all the fixtures that we need to be able to utilize the space appropriately.
That's the business, it's a business district right now. Um, do we, do you have an off-the-cuff idea of whether that can be rezoned? That would be a, a spot zoning problem, wouldn't it?
Alan, do you want to come up?
There's only a state of spot zoning.
I, right, we can't do that, so.
No, spot zoning does, spot zoning is not illegal and it's not a natural thing. So, um, it was, it was a, it was an issue that came up in the sixties, and since then, it's, it was, it, it's not a, as long as, as long as it is, it within, as long as it is in keeping with the master plan and is not, um, and is not, um, egregious to the adjacent property owners, you can still do it. I mean, you're not going to, you, I mean, the planning commission has, has the control, though, to say no.
Right.
But, um, but if you, I mean, like, you're not going to want to put a industrial plant in the middle of residential neighborhood.
And it would have to be rezoned, multi-family residential?
Um, multi-family residential is allowed in the B-three district.
Oh, that's okay. So there wouldn't be, there wouldn't need to be a rezoning?
No, it would be a change of use of the structure.
Change of use, okay.
Yeah, that's what would have to be, that would, that's what would have to be, um, reviewed and approved. But it would have to be reviewed and approved by not only us, but also by the building inspector as well.
Okay, Councilman Morrissey.
Uh, this is a quick question. Would it come, it would come before the planning commission? And would it also, because she was saying, she was thinking it was going to come for zoning?
Yeah, because it's a change of use of the building.
Both, so both, okay. Just for your information.
No, for sure, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council? Councilman Bentley.
What, what do you expect the capacity to be?
I think I'll talk with the, with the building inspector first to see, um, but I, I don't, with, with giving good care, optimal care, um, I would not want to serve more than twenty-five at a time.
Okay, Councilman Solon.
And do you, what, do you have, like, a guess of how long you'll need? What the timeframe would be to be open?
So the reason why I said four months is because once I sign the lease, then basically it'll take us about, um, say about three weeks to move into the main building. And then from there, um, my husband is a licensed contractor, so he can speak all that lingo. So he will speak with the city and the, and all the inspectors and get what we need done there. We plan on just having, um, temporary walls put up just for like, you know, little privacy when they're sleeping, while the men's and women's area, um, making sure we, I mean, we have all the smoke protectors and the extinguishers and everything we're supposed to in that aspect. Uh, we will have to come up, we'll have to have an engineer draw to put in a shower in there. Other than that, than the kitchen, and so I already, the health department already said that they would come and help me and let me know exactly how, what I.
and let me know exactly how, what I need for there, too. And so that's why I said about four months. So I don't think I'd be longer than that.
Follow-up?
Yes, please, thank you. Do you own the thrift store, or are you still leasing that?
We have, it's, we're on a land tax check.
That's, oh, good, okay. Congratulations. I knew there was some trouble.
Yes.
One big concern I have is how do we police it? Not, I mean, I know you police it well, but police it in the fact that some yahoo from California hears that there's this great spot in Hillsdale, Michigan, and makes his way here to take advantage of the services you provide?
I can assure you that my program will not even come close to like what, what Jackson can provide. Jackson has way more resources than we do, or Lenaway, or Adrian. Many of them actually have programs that have been in place for, like, Interfaith has been in business for over fifty years. So they've, you know, they've definitely built a reputation for themselves. I don't think, I don't think by having a transitional shelter will bring people to Hillsdale to our transitional shelter. I, I don't foresee that at all. And then only just because after running the tent and everything we provide, we still don't have, nobody has ever come from some other county to come to Camp Hope. So the people are already here. So, I mean, I don't know what to say about that. If that's your concern, it'd be no different than, I guess, you guys choosing not to have a transitional shelter and us sending them to Jackson.
I mean, I've, I've heard differently from respectable people that people have come.
That may be true, but not to my camp.
That's where I've heard that they have come because of what your camp provides. I just, I don't...
It'd be interesting to know who these people are. No, I mean, like, my, the clients. It'd be interesting to know which homeless it was that came from a different county just to come to Camp Hope.
I thought it was bizarre myself.
I think it's incredibly bizarre.
But, so, I'm a minimal to considering this. I'm not willing to make a decision today, but I would like us to, for public, to have some input in this space. If we could put it maybe on the seventeenth agenda or, it's probably nineteenth agenda. That's a, I don't know how we can do that, Mr. Flynn.
That's a possibility. The only problem is that our attorney will be in court in ten days, something like that. Two weeks from the ten, the ten days citation was issued, May fifteenth.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, so May fifteenth, but it, it's gonna take longer than that to get to court.
Yeah, probably, so they've scheduled...
That's just when it's triggered.
Yeah, my, my code enforcement hearing, so the district court will receive the ticket, and if there's no, they, after the citation, they have ten days to either take care of it, or in the case of our citations, to do a response because we always request a formal hearing, so they can't just pay the ticket. So they've scheduled the last set that I had, yet scheduled was for June third, so presumably it would be sometime after that that the hearing would be scheduled with the district court. And typically what we do with those, just so you know, is oftentimes in consultation with the code enforcement office or if you have given directions to what you wanna have done. There is a way that we can handle this so that it provides for a court order that says within a certain period of time they're either gonna bring the facility to compliance or take it down, right? Which would be the offending current Camp Hope structure. So we could theoretically enter into a consent judgment that would provide that if they're gonna have this transitional facility, you know, when's the date by which that's going to be done, and they just have to hit that target.
But we can also handle this politically rather than judicially.
Yes, absolutely.
And I would rather not pay you to do that if we're gonna make the same decision, no offense.
Yeah, the only thing about that is then you can actually have an enforcement mechanism already in place if they don't comply. So generally, oftentimes what we do is if you comply enough to pay the fines and costs, it's, you know, you're, basically the goal is compliance, it's not to take your money. And if you don't, though, then the court's order is enforceable as of that time. And the city would be able to take steps to dismantle the offending forces of the property if it wanted to. That's the only difference.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much? It, it seems like it would be nice to have, not that I don't, I don't trust any, Missy, to get this done, but, you know, for the sake of future events similar to this, it seems like you do wanna have some sort of backstop. What, what's the cost of doing all that?
My cost is usually one point one hundred and fifteen, two hundred bucks.
I mean, what, what's your time?
That's, that's...
What's, what's the time load, though, to get all that done?
You mean in terms of the number of weeks that you have to do it? Again, you're looking at probably five, six weeks, probably, four to six weeks, somewhere in that.
Okay. Councilwoman Wolf from?
Well, it seems, is there an easy way to do this, like just go on ahead and extending?
That's why I'm waiting, the administrative versus judicial?
Yeah, it seems like we could just do that and just give her another four weeks and, and, and worry about it then.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Wolf from? Uh, Councilwoman Bentley?
On the other hand, I, I thought I heard the attorney to say that if the process starts down, the sheriff doesn't show up and shut it down for what kind of time period?
Well, the sheriff never shows up and shuts it down. That would be a matter of whether or not the city wanted to. So the orders provided, and the court is allowed in the case of these types of code enforcement citations, it's the only place where the district court can issue an effective junk ability. And so what they can say is, if you, they can order that you comply with the ordinance, right? They find you responsible for municipal civil interaction. The judge then orders that you bring the property into compliance within a certain period of time, usually in amount of time or doubt with whoever the defendant is, that's reasonable to get it done. And sometimes people request a lot more time than we're willing to give, but... And then if you don't do it within that time, the court authorizes the city, if it wants to, to go onto the property, to do whatever is necessary to bring it into compliance and to charge the costs against the defendant and also especially assess the lien against the property. So that's the thing that the consent judgment provides, is it gives them the carrot to get it done, right? By whatever date they've agreed to. We can always give them additional time if we think they've made good progress and, you know, it's gonna be imminent. We don't always just automatically right after the, the period runs up trigger by filing something with the court saying, hey, they were in compliance, so now we get to go do whatever we wanna go do with it. So, I mean, we still have flexibility to start at that point. But that at least gets you, if a citation's already issued, it's gonna get scheduled with the district court. At that point, I either have to dismiss it without prejudice and wait for it to issue a citation again if it's an issue further down the line, or we can enter into some sort of consent judgment by agreeing with the judge when you're gonna get that taken care of. That's up to you.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yes, so, I, I think I'm hearing that the prudent thing to do is let the process go forward as it is going forward, and we can intervene anytime in the next four months if we're seeing progress. Is my understanding right?
Yeah, so basically the way it works is the judgment says you have to get it done within a certain period of time. The only time the court does anything is if we come in, it requires the city to file what they call an affidavit of default, right? So I'll contact, when the time runs up, usually the court contacts us and says, hey, have they brought the place into compliance? I checked with Alan, and sees whether or not they have. Sometimes we decide we're gonna give them more time, so I let the court know we're just gonna give them more time. But the only way that enforcement mechanism is triggered is if we file something with the court that's called an affidavit of non-compliance, which would come from Alan, where he's avering on the road that they haven't brought the property into compliance, and therefore we can do what it says under the judgment we're allowed to do. And also usually that's where they can assess by some costs because they didn't bring it into compliance.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flynn?
Could you be up and running by October first? That would be four months, roughly.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't see why not. Obviously, there's gonna be some time period of waiting for, I hope I'm saying this right again, the zone.
Oh, yeah, you gotta wait for it to come to fruition.
Yeah, I have to wait for all of that to be proved. But as far as operating cost and all of that, I'm already doing it. So there really shouldn't be anything that really stops me. It's just a waiting game of getting it done. I have everything I need to set up the facility, even the kitchen and the bathroom. I have everything I need.
Tom, is, is four months okay with, with the court? I mean, is that, is that, you said, you know, that some tried to extend it too long?
Way slower. So when I say that, I mean, you know, there are people who have been two years to see properties out of compliance, and I'll say, well, can you give me another year? And we say, no, how about ninety days or a hundred and twenty or something like that? But I have some that, that are hundred-and-eighty-day deals that we do just because of if someone who's gotten hold of the property didn't realize how much was gonna be involved once they got into it, how bad the structure was. And we've done those kinds of things with the court. Basically, we'll pretty much do whatever it is that we've agreed with the developer.
Well, I would think, real quick, right, I would think that since they're already in the building, they know the positives and the negatives of the building. They're not going into a building that they just bought and don't know if there's rats in the walls or, you know, the ceiling's falling and stuff like that. So they already know the structures sound, that if we give them a timeline of four months, you know, and say, hey, get it done by September thirtieth. You know, if it's already halfway there and it just needs some basic stuff and then waiting around for permits to be approved, things like that, I, I think that's a, a doable thing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Flynn. Councilwoman Sutcliffe?
I agree with that. However, I'd like to extend it more than four months, just before life happens. And so Missy can sleep at night. She's got a little bit of breathing room, that's all. I mean, we're still waiting for the Kefird over there, aren't we? And we're still fighting for that. But I mean, it's, there's unknowns. I mean, in any project that I've ever run, you have contingency for money, you have contingency for time as well. So I would like to offer a little bit more than four months, so she's got some breathing room.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sutcliffe. Councilman, so how are you waiting? Councilwoman Bentley?
Yeah, so I only took the seat in November, and this is one of the first things that we addressed then, and it seemed to have already been a long-term issue. So I'm, I'm open to, to the merciful call, but there has to be some built-in accountability, and we seem to struggle with that. So let the process go forward as it is, and she can show us her progress, and they intervene months. But if we just keep extending and extending it, like, what are we doing?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bentley. If council is going to extend it, I think I probably would take the opposite view. That's gonna be a cost to us, and she'll have to deal with judicial concerns during that whole time. I understand your reasoning, right? Then it's, there's a consent judgment and it has the force of law behind it. I think I do like the idea of keeping it within the legislative body, though. One middle ground solution could possibly be that we extend a month, two months, and there's some sort of target. Okay, a month, you have to have your stuff out of the building. Two months, you have to have plans. Three months? I don't know what it is, right, but... And so it's, it's coming back to us for consistent, you know, it's not like the Kefird where we just reapprove it every year and then see what happens. But there's consistent deadlines. That way we have sort of a constant judgment of the council at the same time as a possibility of ending it if the plan falls apart or something changes.
But before we take this drastic step that you guys seem to be considering, has, has anybody from the city staff been in the building? Like, do we have any idea what the condition is? Or are we just going off, what, you know, no, no facts, but accountability? Like, I'd like some professional going in and say, yeah, this is, seems reasonable, or this is ludicrous. Like, I don't have anybody to know.
Well, it's currently open as a business, so I'm assuming that it's, you know, it's good enough for a business to run.
Well, are you talking about the, the store or the?
No.
Tent, the camp?
Big Boy. Yeah, there's, there's currently a store in there, and they're open to the public, so assuming it's fine.
I just wanted to say that I've always, everything has been open at Hillsdale Community Thrifts and, and at Camp Hope. So if you wanna come to see how we structurally formed it, you know, we consulted with an engineer to make it as safe as possible. Now, obviously, that wasn't documented because I can't afford ten thousand dollars. But you're welcome to come and look at it. Hillsdale College kids have come to look. They helped us install the insulation. You're welcome to come and look at it. You're welcome to come anytime and come look at it if you wanna see it firsthand.
Councilwoman Wolf from?
Well, also, we have a, you know, in terms of what she's been doing before, but now she's got a new plan. And that, which is very different from the way it was working before. And so we have this really in the last, Missy, how long have you been able to get this going? Where you're gonna get the new building and that. So it's only been a couple of weeks, right?
We've always had the idea of a transitional shelter, so I've always had my book ready. I just really wasn't ready to execute it just yet, so I had to line up the lease, I had to line up the down payment, I had to line up exactly how I'm gonna execute it, so I did that within ten days. But luckily, I had already had it together because I've been doing the program for the last two years.
Yeah, so the point I was just trying to make is that it's not like she's, you know, just installing, 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 and not doing anything in the, in the last, recently, she's been able to get a new building for her thrift store and is now going to be able to convert that building to a homeless shelter.
Councilwoman Brunson?
Yeah, I'm with Councilwoman Bentley here. Mr. Thompson, if I understand what you said directly, suggested that we can set up an initial timeframe, and if real progress is being made, extend the timeframe before it goes into enforcement. But I, I do think we need something in place with, with real penalties and things set in place so we don't have to babysit her so that she can get her work done, the chains get up.
Thank you.
I only, yeah, I just wanted to say that while the code enforcement was Mel DeBia, making a charity thrift, Melissa Duster, our new executive director, the citation is actually in just my name. So if you wanna talk about being personally invested, the citation is personally in my name. So it, obviously, I don't eventually comply. If I'm not mistaken, it, it goes to me. I'll end up in jail. So I...
So, Councilwoman Brunson, are you? So the, I think the question is whether we leave this for the attorney to make a consent judgment with the court and Missy. And I would assume we would instruct him about how to do that, but there would be a lot of discretion for the court. Or, so either Missy is accountable to the court or to us directly during this process, right? Those are our options here?
That's not what I'm understanding the attorney to say. We can, we can be involved in the process if it goes forward, and it can. If I'm not mistaken, it's May fifteenth is the first hearing, which would probably be a ninety-second thing or something, and then...
No, there, there won't be a hearing until sometime in June or July, probably, by the time the court sets it. And at that point, we would enter a consent judgment, and we could give her four months or six months from then, however much time we wanted to give. And then, nothing happens unless at the end of that, we go back to the court and say, didn't comply, we wanna trigger the, and that's all you just about, we're gonna trigger the enforcement provisions of the order. And we can leave it sitting for however long we want to after that time period is up. What it just does is, once that time period is up, if the city makes a determination, wants to go ahead with the enforcement part, it's already there. We just have to file one piece of paper with the judge.
And we would direct to you about how to establish the consent agreement, what the parameters would be?
Yeah, if you wanna do that right now, you can tell me what you want it to be.
Okay, so we could either make an emotion to extend it administratively or to say, pursue a consent agreement with an October first deadline or whatever council agrees to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or just leave it open and, and come back in a month and talk about it again, like, the, nothing happen.
There won't be a hearing probably within, before a month. Like I said, the last set of hearings I had scheduled was scheduled for June third, which means at this point, June third is probably full, but others, so it'll be scheduled sometime after that for my next set of citations that comes in. which means at this point, June third is probably full, but it's, uh, so it'll be scheduled sometime after that for my next set of citations that comes in.
So it doesn't seem to me that there's a binary choice, that we either hand it to the attorney or, or we call him off. We let him go forward and we direct him every step of the way?
Yes, I think you're right. That'll, thank you for clarifying that, yes. Okay, so we can do nothing, talk about this. We can make a motion now about how to direct the attorney. Could send it to a committee. We could issue a flat extension right now with no judicial enforcement. It's a good discussion. I, I think leaving it would be fine and discussing at the next meeting. Councilman Soha?
Um, which, um, committee would need to address the changing of?
I think public safety, because it's a.
Public safety?
Yes, yep.
Well, then I would just, uh, ask public safety to get together and discuss it further if we just maintain the status quo.
Okay. Um, we did, or I'm gonna try to follow the procedure of actually formally kicking things to committee with, is that a motion?
Yeah, I was just realizing I'm headed to public safety, so.
Yes, you are.
I'll, I'll get a meeting except for probably next Thursday.
Okay, so motion to send this to public safety for consideration, then?
Certainly.
Okay. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha to send this matter to public safety, seconded by Councilman Bentley. Any further discussion?
In the meantime, no enforcement, right? It's, I mean, it's going.
It's going forward.
It's going forward, but we're not gonna.
Yeah, there's already been enforcement triggered with citation was issued, so it's just a matter of when the time comes for the hearing. You can tell me, you know, you want me to, what you want me to do. Do you want me to continue to, sue it? Do you want me to dismiss it? Do you want me to make a consent judgment? That's typically what we offer everyone, is the opportunity to comply by way of consent judgment. So that's, well, the way the process typically works.
My suggestion would be for public safety to get together and to set up monthly, bi-monthly sort of check-ins and then to make that formal in the consent agreement, if that is, uh, if that's their judgment. Is that okay?
If you wanted to do that, usually the consent judgment says you gotta extend the time to comply. And before that time's up, you can kinda take the code enforcement office to verify and judge your compliance.
So it's usually not particularly specific?
There are no, it says what you have to do. It says how long you have to do that. And it says that you have to have someone come from the city, come do an inspection and verify the training compliance prior to when that time expires. And that's it. We don't wanna spend the money, time, and effort to have the.
Drawing up an agreement, right.
Seeing and making sure that you did, you know, that you applied to the planning commission, that you did whatever else you're supposed to do. You're responsible for making sure you get it done within the time period. Now, if when that time is coming up, you kinda tell the city and you say, we're almost there, we just have this piece left, then the determination could be made whether or not we'll just, we'll let it ride a bit longer to see if very well actually get it finished.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bentley?
Yes, and you can let us know as soon as you get a court date or hearing or whatever triggers happen in the court system. You can email us and we can know that day.
Yeah, I'll let the, the city manager know.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Soha?
Well, um, next week, actually, my evenings are awful with school-related activities. I have, uh, this Thursday or, um, and I just wanted to ask public safety.
It's Councilman Flynn and? What else?
Sutcliffe. Or the twenty-second, um.
I'll do it again. I will not be here this Thursday, so the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to kick this to public safety for a discussion on the twenty-second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, council. Very good discussion, very informative. Glad we explored all the options there.
Thank you for hearing me out today.
Thank you.